Call to order, first thing is election of board officers.
I move we appoint Mike Clapson Chair.
Second.
Are there any other motions or additions to that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Thank you for your confidence.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we appoint Mr. Robert Bixby as the clerk of the board.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Scott, you're still in the room.
Yeah, I'll take it for the present time.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Me.
Say it loud, I'm sorry. I didn't hear that, did you?
Say what?
Alright, is there any other board officers? Hearing none. I would at this time ask for approval of the February twenty-second minutes for their meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any corrections or deletions or anything in there we wanna?
I thought they looked good.
Looked good to me.
Alright, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Sounds like it's good. Okay. Ivory, let's go into the road commissioners' report first and then we'll go down the list.
For an update, we're hoping the new truck will be here within a week. The tandem, we're actually had to top dress a couple of the roads for mud issues. We're gonna see how it plays out with the weather and stuff of our freezing and thon. Other than that, I... Any other questions?
Okay, before we go in to any of the other items, we have, Mr. Austin, would you like to have some comments, I think, for...
Yeah, as you know, Jim Austin. Just, you know, I've got three generations of family that have been in the town crew and stuff and so seeing the things that are going on and I really would like to help Cash if I can and everything, but this getting roads done at one and two o'clock in the afternoon for the first time, first pass in a snowstorm and stuff is just dead wrong. Just a little bit of history, back years ago when my brother was road commissioner, it was a three-man crew and he wanted to go to a four-man crew. He went to Carl Lampier, who was the best road commissioner of Town of Clarendon that never had. Well and beyond, everybody else, and asked him, "How do I get a fourth truck?" And Carl says, "You gotta go by how many times that truck goes by each taxpayer's window? That's what makes them happy. That's what keeps them off your back." So, and at that time, Mr. Lampier said, "You have sixty-five miles of road." Well, in doing a little more investigating, Cash told me fifty-five. This young lady over here told me on the books, there is twenty-five point four-three miles of Class Three and twenty-three point three-seven miles of Class Two. So, with all that, if you take and add that up, you come up to forty-eight point eight tenths of a mile of roadway. If you divide that by four trucks, because you have four trucks on the road, that brings you down to just a whisker over twelve miles of road for each truck to travel. Okay? Now, if you go out the door in the morning and each truck goes to its own piece of town and works on its own roads and everything else, Cash has told me, and I called man from the state and asked him, "What's the travel speed for a truck to be traveling plowing and sanding?" I got the same number from both, fifteen miles an hour, fifteen miles an hour. So, if you have to come back once covering your twelve miles of road, I'm willing to give you two hours and cover your twelve miles of road and everything else. So my question is, when you come into work at six o'clock in the morning, why aren't I seeing a truck on the cordillane road before twelve-thirty, one o'clock in the afternoon? Because you only have twelve miles for each of them trucks to have to travel. And if each of them trucks is traveling back and forth chasing one another on paved roads, because I'm being told paved roads need to be done first and everything else, once again, even if it was only one truck doing the paved road, all the paved roads, he can do it in four hours or less and everything. So once again, my question again is, where are the trucks and why aren't they getting to the dirt roads before that? I've had three storms now where I've had to put my truck in four-wheel drive to get up Tommy LaVictory's Hill at ten, eleven o'clock in the morning. And one storm that I went off the road with my wife Subaru at eleven-thirty in the morning because the road hadn't been touched yet. And I just don't understand that, you know? And I don't want Cash's job and I really wanna help Cash and everything else because I think he could be a hell of a road commissioner and everything. We just gotta figure out what's happening and why. Because if you do the mathematics of it, I can fill in some of this.
You gotta understand also, to get to them dirt roads is tar roads. We are doing the tar roads so that when the trucks do get to the dirt roads, they have safe travel, get to the tar roads. Not only that, our tar roads are main corridors in town, straight through. After all, and I hear you about plowing and stuff, we have actually some of these storms, we watch the weather, we watch the radar, some of these storms, we don't immediately go right out and plow them dirt roads. For my reasoning, and I'm sure the select board backed me up on this, is if we go out and plow them immediately during the storm, we're putting down material, we're plowing it off, putting down material. And if you want us every hour, that means we're gonna probably plow that road four different times and four different times of material. So where do... And the other thing is, with these storms we've had, when you have snow on the road and stuff like that, sometimes, most definitely, it's safer to travel on that snow than it is a bare bald road that turns ice with a little bit of material on it.
Well, Cash...
So, and if that's the case, we'll up the highway budget another forty, fifty thousand and we'll be right there plowing and plowing and plowing and putting material down, plowing it off, putting it in a ditch.
Yeah, well, the other side of the coin is, I don't understand why we're pouring just straight salt on these paved roads. The only reason most municipalities put straight salt down is because the sand gets into their drainage and goes through their sewer plants. And then it costs them money to treat all that sand and everything else. Town of Clarendon, to the best of my knowledge, has no sewage, other than what you've got in your own backyard.
You're exactly right on that.
At all, and everything else. So why aren't we putting a salt-sand mix on these paved roads like we always used to?
You're exactly right on that, but on the other hand, with the sand washing into the ditches and getting for water quality, you don't understand the water quality rules that we have to go by.
Oh, yes, I do. Yes, I do.
If you did, you wouldn't be asking these questions.
Oh, yes, I would be.
Stop declaring it right to you.
The way, the last few years, especially the research that I have done on this, the state is now saying that we, most towns like Clarendon, Pittsburgh and stuff, we're polluting Lake Champlain. And so they want us to use the least amount of salt and brine, like those kind of things, unless we absolutely have to.
Yeah.
And also, I think, isn't it now, they're telling us that farm fields and stuff that there's around Otter Creek and things, we're supposed to be expanding what the normal one, or fifty yards or whatever.
Buffer zones.
Buffer zones.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, the people that come up with these rules are sitting at a desk up Montpelier. They have no idea what the hell's going on down in the town, in my opinion. The board members do what they need to do.
And will that follow up? If you're saying sand was so important when the state of Mont using Route Seven and all the highways and stuff?
Well, they do. They've used more sand this year than they ever have and everything else.
I haven't seen it, I've seen straight salt and brine.
Well, they've used salt and brine, but they also have used sand. Maybe not as much in Rutland County.
That's news to me, then.
But I travel a good part of the southern part of the state every day and everything else and I've seen a lot more sand on the roads than I have. And we always used to go out with a load of sand on and, like you say, we'd plow the road one way and then we'd come back the other way and we'd sand it. And just light sand, maybe, you know, a little heavier on the corners or something or at the intersection. And then, yeah, if we went and plowed the road again in three hours, we plowed a little bit off, but everything... But you're doing the same thing with salt, if you're putting it down on the road, you're plowing that off. Or else it's melting and just running off and then you gotta put it down again. Because I mean, you guys have never really seen a snowstorm. I mean, I've been, I've worked snowstorms before where we worked for three days. We didn't go home for three days. We sat down in a chair down there, town shed, tried to get a two-hour nap in and then we took off again and everything. There hasn't been a snowstorm in the last fifteen years like we used to get. So this is why I ask these questions and like you say, you know, I had a grandfather that worked on the town roads and father worked on town roads, my brother worked on town roads and everything. And I worked closely with all of them. I remember riding in the town truck with my grandfather when I was probably eight or ten years old and everything, you know? And it was just him and Mr. Lampier at that time and everything. I forgot who I told, I think it was Mike I told. They used to have sand piles over at the farm on East Road over there, the Spencer Farm. And they also had a sand pile over at Frank Barker's Farm. And those were the two people that ran the school buses, which were only a van at that time and everything, because we had five schools and everything. But because the sand pile was atop Walker Mountain, them two farmers were willing to let them use their bucket loader and load the single axle truck that they were running, you know?
Norm had the same idea, you can verify this.
Yeah.
Up by where the old school used to be, right there by Ball Field.
Yeah.
He tried to dump a couple yards of sand up there, but the problem was loading.
Have a way to load it.
And so they were constantly running the loader up and downhill.
Right, right. And I understand that. This sand pile out here is probably about the most central it can be in the Town of Clarendon. And the other thing was, we went to tandem trucks, number one, because the state wants us to lighten up the loads on the road, but number two, a tandem truck takes twice as much sand with it when it goes out the gate as a single axle truck.
It actually takes a load and a half.
So, alright, a load and a half. But we used to go with a load and had to come back and get another load, you know? So that's why I'm saying, if you just drove your piece of road that you had, each truck, an hour, you could drive it. But you gotta come back and get another load of sand or salt, whatever, to be able to cover all twelve miles of your road. Because you're not gonna get twelve miles out of a box of sand or salt. I understand that and I realize that.
Well, one of the things that's on the agenda tonight, and this is why I asked you to speak before we went down the highway agenda, is plowing route concerns. And I think you and I talked about this a little bit, but I know that you did talk with your crew about having, especially the main roads, dirt roads, that get the most traffic, to consider having them done first after you get the blacktop roads done. And so maybe a possibility might be...
And that is, that is happening.
Yeah.
It's already happening.
A possibility, at least, you know, me not being out on the roads like you guys do, but it might be who's ever done first, even though you do different parts of town, come up and do the main traveled dirt roads first.
We all work together.
Yep.
If somebody's already finished up on a section of town or something, they immediately go to another section, they're on the radio, off communication, talking with other ones. Other, the other drivers, see who needs help where and what needs to be done.
Could that be considered that who's ever done first, go to the...
We are.
The high-traffic dirt roads?
We already are.
That's what we're doing now? I know that the school raised a lot of concern about the blacktop roads absolutely have to be done then. Didn't the state get involved with that too? I think the state was recommending that, this is, I think, from Darryl, who's still here, that the, your bus routes for your schools should be considered first. And so then they changed some of the routes where they don't go up and down the dirt roads anymore, they stay on the blacktop, so.
Right. But if you do the mathematics of it with four trucks and a Class Three road is paved road, am I correct?
No.
For a Class Two road?
Class Two is a paved road.
Class Two is a paved road, alright. So, at twenty-three point three-seven miles with four trucks on the road, you're talking less than three miles for each truck to travel.
Issue is, Jimmy, and you know that, is you got Walker Mountain, you got the flats, you've got two sections on that side.
Yeah. But it's still, it's still only six miles for each truck to travel, Cash, at four trucks. You know, I mean, you can almost get out and walk faster. You know, this is my question.
Get your Weber or something.
Is, is, is why does it take so long and everything else? It never used to. And I don't, I just don't understand it, you know? I like hearing that we don't have a truck off the road and on its side, so you're taking a little more care there, because usually we hear that every year.
And the other thing I wanna bring up, actually, we actually have three big trucks and one small one.
Right.
And that little one goes and does the little roads.
Well, that's what it was, what it was originally.
Actually, you're back down, you're actually back down to three roads.
Yeah.
I actually take the little truck and go do the little roads so I can leave the big trucks on the main corridors. So they don't have to spend time turning and back and forth and...
And that makes perfect sense and everything, and everything. You know, and that's why, one of the reasons why we went to one ton.
Figures on the blocktop need to be divided out by three instead of four, but that's, that's my...
Even if you divide it out by three, you know, you're still only, only talking, you know? You're adding two more miles if you go by three, because you had six miles going by four, so if you take that, take that, that six miles off, you added two, two miles to each of them trucks.
In a sense, you're wrong on that too, because like when you do the West Rutland Run, up over Chippen Hook, you're going all the way out and turn around, coming all the way back.
Yeah.
So it's like, you know, if that's, you know, a six-mile run, you're saying that's a twelve-mile run actually.
Well, right.
Flat out.
So, but, you know, but I mean...
And same way down here, even then, you know, you plow both ways.
Yeah. But still, the times just don't add up, is my problem and everything else. And then, the day that I came down to see you and you were busy loading trucks, which I didn't understand why you couldn't get out of the loader and talk to me and them guys load the truck themselves, I would think that all of them should be capable enough to load their own truck.
They were, but I was mixing material that day and I keep material mixed down here to keep them loaded and keep them screened. So when they come in, they have a load, they don't have to wait, go and pull material out, mix the stone with the sand and run it through the screen. It's already, I have it stockpiled for them so they can immediately load and go.
But if I come down as a taxpayer and wanna talk to you, you should be able to take the time to talk with them.
That was totally wrong timing.
So, and everything else, because that's part of your job.
That is part of my job, but at that time, I'm not gonna let the truck sit there.
No, that person should be able to do that. What happens, what happens if you're not there, Cash? That truck, you wanna sit there until you come back?
No, he loads himself.
Well, there you go.
When I have a stockpile up and ready to go, I'll jump my little truck and then I go and then they come back, they have that stockpile to work off of.
Yeah, but...
Immediately load and go.
If you weren't there at all.
I've just, I thought, I think that's about enough of the discussion for tonight.
Well, see, this is the problem.
Is there, is there some kind of an opportunity to call guys in a little earlier during big storms or...
We do, we're on top of them, but the thing is, do you wanna, do you want to go up on top of the mountain or, well, Jimmy's place, up on top of Cordillane Road? Do you want, I had no problem, if you guys want it and the town taxpayers wanna pay it, we will start plowing on a snowstorm immediately on the dirt roads and keep plowing and plowing and putting material down and keep plowing it back off. We'll just do it, but I'm gonna tell you right now, it's gonna take another forty to fifty thousand dollars in the budget.
So, you know, it's our, the select board's responsibility to keep an eye on budgets, so if something is working, then...
If you talk with some of the safety personnel around here, such as fire department and stuff, they haven't had issue the way we've been doing it with, you know, fire calls like that, because there's been a couple of times we've been during the night in that scenario.
Well, I know that you and I had talked about this a little bit and one of the things that I think we mutually agree on when we can, soon as the important roads, blacktop roads are done, is then to consider which is the pass-through roads where they have the most traffic on the dirt roads to have crews get right on it.
And that is happening.
That's a change to...
That, no, it's been like that, it's been happening. You got one, one truck immediately goes to Tier Road, that's his number one when he gets up there. The, the other truck immediately goes Schoolhouse, Cordillane, comes back, reloads and does the upper part of Cordillane by Jimmy's. And then the other trucks over here, and a lot of times when he's finished up, he'll radio saying, "I'm done over here, what do you need?", whether it be gravel pit or East and West Hemuth.
Yeah.
A lot of times, I'll grab with a little truck, higher Anderson, New Horizons.
Small stuff.
Yeah, the one by Ron's Auto.
Yeah.
You know, them roads that, yeah, they're important, but the big trucks are on the big roads. The big trucks are on the big roads, trust me, they're on them, they're going.
It's too late that they're on it, that's all, all I'm saying.
Well, that's, I mean, that's where you go. You have a five-hour storm, you wanna start plowing right at hour one and plow it three different times and plow it off three different times, is that...
We used to, we used to do it. We used to plow with a storm and, and, you know, we used a little sand here and there and stuff and, and we always used to use screened sand. I'm not saying we need to use screened sand, I'm fine with the sand that we're using, I think it's a great thing and everything else, I think it should be put on the paved roads. And we're a town where people can't come after us for a broken windshield and everything else, they'll slow down, because then we can save on the sheriffs a little bit and I'll have to have sheriffs chasing people around, slow them down if they know there's a rock road.
Then we call them because they're in a ditch.
So, um...
Well, I think that we've heard your concerns.
Yeah.
And let's see where we can improve and see where we're going.
Yeah, and I'm glad to see the grader already out and not worry not getting it out the day before we need it. So, and I hope to see roads get graded a little bit more this summer, you know? Don't, you get into a project, you still gotta send a guy out on that grader every, every month and, you know, look at these dirt roads.
Well, I think to Cash's credit, over the last year and a half especially, a lot of dirt roads that were continually potholed. We did the lining of the ditches, taking the aprons off the sides of the roads.
Yeah.
Put new coves in and stuff, so, and I noticed this already on the road that I live on, you know, on St. Louis Road, where it used to be crazy with potholes, now it's holding up pretty good. So I think that, you know, those efforts are gonna pay off for us.
Oh, yeah, you know, and like I say, I think the stone in the sand is gonna help out. I mean, I've seen mud seasons where you couldn't get to your house, you know, years ago. We don't have muddy roads like we used to have and everything, so, but I just would like to see, you know, see the trucks out there a little bit sooner and, you know, I know budget, 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 but, I mean, I just, with the amount of equipment that we have and everything else, if we're, if we're not gonna see a truck until two o'clock in the afternoon, let's get rid of two of the trucks and two of the drivers, because two trucks and two drivers can still be there by two o'clock in the afternoon, if you do it mathematically wise. That's all there is to it, you know? I mean, you can only drive so fast, I understand that, but...
I think that given the fact that Cash is the new road commissioner, he's improved on many levels, but there's still room for improvement in all of us.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So I think that we'll, you know, keep working with the crew and see where we go. Alright?
Thank you.
No, thanks for coming down, taking your time. Let's go right to weight limit postings update. What do you got for us?
Well, Katie and I did quite a bit of research on that. If Katie wants to do a follow-up on that, you wanna speak for that or...
Sure, I think I mentioned last week or the week before, when you weren't here, that we're pretty sure we're not gonna post the roads this year just due to the trucks that do tear up the roads are exempt from weight limits anyway, ag-related vehicles. So, that was our decision and we hope you agree with that.
We haven't posted in years, but...
We're also, I've talked with Sawmill and stuff and they're kinda on board with us on some of the outlog-in operations that go on.
Redirect them.
And redirect them and not only that, Katie, you have one in your packet there.
Yeah, there's in there.
On paper, I got from the mill that, Sawmill River Lumber that gave me of them directing their main road traffic for lumber and heavier trucks on their main corridors.
Yeah, I see that.
To get them out of town.
Now, my understanding as well was that, based on our initial discussion, was that if we wanna talk about posting roads going forward, we're gonna have to, our, at this point, our statute, well, what's the ordinances are out of date.
Correct.
And they need to be updated, is my understanding. Because that's why, back when Linda was still here, because I'm, I'm pretty sure that was back when Linda was still here, before she even retired, that was under Darryl when we found out that weight limits and all of that, our ordinances were so far out of date that we couldn't legally even find anybody anymore.
That, believe it or not, that was the last year or two that Norm was on there. He came to the board and said, "What's this sense of doing this when, you know, it costs us more money because they're only paying like ten dollars for all the weight permits?"
What I was getting around to say, and I know that we have a lot of ag vehicles that are exempt, that are, that obviously, I mean, there's enough of us that are hauling big loads of sap around that are certainly rutting up dirt roads, I mean, there's no doubt about it. And we're exempt because we're ag production. But the, the reality that I think we had a lot of issues with the last two years was log trucks that were not supposed to be traveling the roads. And it was a couple individuals specifically that we knew who they were and had to have, I think, there were some conversations had too about that. But I think in the summertime, when we typically revisit ordinances, we need to talk about, okay, what would it take to have our ordinances back to having some teeth to them? So that, I mean, this spring, you and I both know, just Jimmy traveling Cordillane, there's not a lot of frost in there this year. I, I don't think that we're gonna have the roads break apart like we had two years ago. I think that, you know, the creek roads already come apart and I think what came out of it probably is about what's in it. I, I just don't think that we're gonna have the mud holes like we had. Maybe I'll get proven wrong in a week, I don't know, but I've talked to several people who run excavators that have said, "There's no frost in the ground." They said, "As soon as you get under the snow, there's nothing there." So hopefully it's not a bad year. So I don't think this year it's pertinent to have that conversation, but I think we also wanna be prepared where if it's a winter like we used to have fifteen years ago and we're really gonna have roads breaking up in the spring, we probably wanna have that in our back pocket and use our judgment so that we can have some teeth and step in and say, "Okay, this year the roads are bad enough, Town of Clarendon's posted the roads, we're not gonna go there." I think it's just something that we should talk about. And again, it doesn't have to be now, we can't do it, we can't change an ordinance now fast enough to do it anyway. But in the summertime... But in the summertime when we revisit some of those, it might be something for us to talk about, cuz I do also think that overweight permits, we're leaving money on the table. I don't mean to say it that way, but that's, that's ultimately overweight permits. The theory is you're raising money to offset some of the damage that's being done to the roads and by not doing that, we're leaving that hanging there.
When Steve was the sheriff, another thing that he brought up by overweight permits is that there was something. If a sheriff, for instance, stopped somebody cuz they said, well, they're overweight and all that stuff, all of a sudden, well, I'm not that heavy. And then you had to get a scale.
Correct.
Remember that, Rick?
Yep. Way back then, we actually used to have a deal with Carreras that we could send them up there.
Right.
But I don't know how it is now.
And if it's egregious enough, DMV will come down, won't they? If it's bad enough.
That, that's what I'm not sure of, because I don't know of anybody in our department that's even stopped a truck on a back road.
We stopped them for more than a half hour, so the DMV would have to get down here.
DOT would have to scoot down in a hurry then. We have a question, Mike?
Question or floor?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Carol Austin, what kind of money did we pay Carreras for a service?
I don't know that we did, um, that I recall, I wasn't on the board back then, but I don't know that we did pay them.
No, that, it was, uh, they were helping us out, but the other thing was that, you know, we would help them out too. So that, it was a, you know, you help me, I help you kinda thing, but then after a while, uh, that's when Steve came down here. In one of the meetings and he brought up the fact that, you know, going forward, it may be that the town may have to have its own scales and everything else. He sat right here in the front row.
Sure, sure.
Then who are you gonna train to?
And, and I'm not suggesting we get our own scales, but at the same time, I'm suggesting that if there's gonna be. A winter where the roads break up, like your first year, you dealt with probably the muddiest roads we've had in. A long, long time. I mean, those, the roads fell apart like I haven't seen in years, that first winter, spring that you had. Um, you know, I think we wanna have our ducks in a row, so if we see the roads come apart like that. We're gonna throw the posted signs up and, and have some teeth to stop the log trucks and stop, you know, really put the brakes on what's going on. I think. I think we should at least talk about that and I know, again, I don't believe it's gonna be that kinda year this year, I just don't see the roads being in that condition. But what's not to say next year's not, or the year after, we need to be prepared.
I would say we, we would have that ordinance in place before we even began to think about, update them now.
And that's my understanding.
Get them updated now.
The ordinances needed to be addressed, cuz that's what was outdated.
Have them updated, uh, before next one here.
Because if I recall, when my dad was here, that was one of the main reasons getting away from this, because the ordinance was not effective enough. To do any good in any way.
Correct.
All we were charging was low for the fifteen dollars for the ordinance or?
Ten, fifteen.
All I remember is it was my.
For a permit.
It was my first or second year on the board and I looked at everybody and said, what on earth are we doing? Cuz it was less than probably what we were paying the person to do it. And I said, if we're gonna do something, you gotta raise at least enough revenue to cost even the documentation to, to do it in the office. And that's one of the reasons why we backed away from it and then Steve told us that there was ordinance issues with what we had anyway.
And that's when Heather, who was our admin for fifty time, um, she went to leagues and all this stuff to get some. And, and the information she got is somewhere in the vault there to upgrade.
You gotta realize now, that's almost.
That's probably.
That's six or seven years ago, so that's, that's a while back now.
But I'm, I'm just making the public aware, if we weren't sitting on our hands.
No, 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 and I'm not suggesting we were, I'm just saying, this summer when we take a look at some, I'm sure we'll have ordinances that are gonna come up again this summer that need to be addressed. Let's keep that one on the docket to look at because I think we do wanna have it prepared in the event we have to use it.
Because some, some of these rigs that are traveling, I almost think even in the summertime, they're running over the limit.
Oh, I'm sure they are.
Do you have any points you wanna make as far as that concern?
No, the only other thing I just threw out there that. I think the public needs to understand what we just actually learned about this too, just recently was. You cannot even, even though they're not agriculture, you cannot actually stop a existing business. You can't post a road. If I had one, you know, over here in a crossroad, a business, even if you post it. Me establish business, you could not stop me coming.
So you're talking about a business receiving a delivery or sending something out?
You cannot, and then.
Even if, even if our ordinance was up to date and in force?
That's what I've been told, I just talked.
What's usually having the ordinance?
So, so again, I think, so we don't go circles on this tonight for the next twenty minutes. I think the reality is, let's do some more research, June or July, and let's see where we land on it. If that's the case, I, I agree with you. If that's the case and that's the way that the legislature's written the statutes now, it is pointless. There's no teeth to it and there's nothing you can do.
The only thing to do is ask the log trucks not to do a log in operation certain part of the year.
Correct, but theoretically, the other thing is, is logging operations this time of year, at least in the next week or so. Should be shutting down for mud season, cuz they're not supposed to be pulling logs when it's muddy anyway, so, you know, as long as the ground's hard, they do it, but, you know.
I know my lawn is spongy already.
Kind of decisions looking forward to June or July.
Yeah, I'll make a note.
Yeah, we'll get some information, uh, up to date. I wonder how many towns, do you know, any of the local towns that are around us?
Probably the, the most involved ones, West Rattlin because of Whuppa Hollow Road.
Yeah.
With, um, Miss.
Amia.
Gaia. How Clerks of Lucius.
Okay.
Cuz I used to see our town posted signs, but I don't see any.
They're, they're ones really on top of it, of all towns around us, that I found out.
Is that because they do get Amia trucks down there?
Yeah.
Because, I mean, the truck route runs year round.
Yeah.
So, they're running, they're running limestone out of Middlebury year round, doesn't matter.
Oh, we're talking Whuppa Hollow.
I know, but what are they running, what are they running down Whuppa Hollow?
All your jockeys coming out from Midwest, coming across New York line.
They're coming in the back.
Using GPS and.
Yeah.
Coming in the back, coming in the backside, yeah, okay.
They get up in there.
SLC runs a lot of rock too.
All right, moving right along, I think I killed that one, uh, is. I wanted to discuss this Article Four, so it was, uh.
Yeah, we have CJ with us. CJ's here.
CJ, do you hear us? He was on mute before.
Yeah, he'll have to unmute and come on, he's coming. He's unmuted.
There he is.
Are you awake?
Let me turn this up so we can hear on our end.
There we go.
There we go. CJ, I know you're unmuted, I, if your microphone's on, we should be able to hear you at least.
Hi, I'm here.
There he is, we, yeah, we just can't see you, that's all.
Okay.
Don't worry about it, we can hear you, that's all. There you are.
Yeah, so you wanna state your concerns on Article Four?
I didn't quite hear that.
Sorry, uh, Mike wanted to know if you had, wanted to make any statement on the Article Four discussion.
I think I've made enough.
Okay, let me, is, is your point that why do we have an Article Four when we have also in our budget that we vote on? The town votes on, we have, uh, money in there, uh, as well. You, you, the reasoning is, uh, years ago, when we would have a budget that did not pass. We had no money to contract contractors to do any paving whatsoever and by the time. A new budget finally did pass. All the contractors were too busy to do work in our town. That was one of the main reasons why we did that years ago. Did you get that?
I heard it.
So we, uh, at least a couple of members of the board that are still present, when that was done. We encourage new board members to do that same thing. As a matter of fact, we have heard from many of the public. Over the years about having that article, not necessarily Article Four, but whenever it's put in the arrangement. Uh, to, so that just in case the main budget goes down, we still have money to do roadwork, paving. That's not just dedicated for paving, it's dedicated for work, roadwork. Do you have any comments after that?
And if the budget goes down, there's a lot of other cost items and they don't have the same dilemma?
Uh, to some extent, yes, but the, the, the key thing is here, uh, for us is. To get in line with a contractor to do at least some paving, so we want funding. Other than what is in the budget, just in case. Now, if both the budget and the article, whatever article that may be. Passes, that gives us an advantage, we can do a little extra work than we would normally do.
Um, I go back, you know, with your last sentence there, you do extra work than you normally do. The work you do, to me, should be on an as needed basis, not an extra. If it's extra but not needed, it shouldn't be done.
Well, I think at this point, CJ, I'm off camera, but it's Robert over here on the corner, one of my, since I've been on the board. The goal has always been, and Cash, you'll have to give the exact figure, but it's been, is it a mile and? There's a certain, there's like a length of paving that we shoot to do a year.
Yeah, and the thing is with that, the article you're talking about, if we do not have that approved. And we get grants, we cannot get grants because we use that as our matching town grant.
Well, correct, and I was, I was gonna go there, but the other thing that I was.
Timing issue too, isn't it?
What I was gonna say is, since I've been on the board, from my perspective and I think many people on the board's perspective. We've been playing catch up for years on the roads, on the paved roads especially, we've been playing a lot of catch up. I would say we're, we're hopefully getting to the point where we're gonna at least be back on somewhat of a schedule. With most of them because of the reconstruction that has happened over the last ten years or so. That we're gonna be in a place where hopefully it's gonna be more maintaining. Aside from the, the grind, like Walker Mountain, one of the big discussions we had about Walker Mountain is Walker Mountain's gotta be ground. The, the corner at the top of Walker Mountain has to be pitched back the right direction. There, there's a lot of different factors to Walker Mountain that would pay, played into its cost. And ultimately the need for that grant to make it doable. Otherwise, it was gonna be a huge burden on the back of the backs of the taxpayer. But the idea was, we've kept this general amount of paving in the budget since I've been here, which is going on. Longer than I probably should be, um, the, but to go to the point where. We're, we're playing that catch up, we're trying to get caught up and I think, like I say, from my perspective, we're, we're starting to get within grasp of. Another year or two, I'm hoping, maybe three, we're gonna be back. Where we're supposed to be in more on the maintenance side rather than the rebuilding side.
Right. Right, now I add to that, that with the COVID and stuff and not getting grants last year actually put us back one more year. Um, cuz the plan was to do the Walker Mountain, Mountain itself this last year and then. Our plan was to have grants in place for this year, twenty, two thousand fiscal year twenty-two for due from. Uh, Schoolhouse, which by McCormick's, out through that section.
To finish Walker Mount, to get it back, yeah.
And then if there's any subsidy left over, we're looking at down on the north end of, well, I don't wanna say north end, but by the, uh, Iron Creek Road, by Al Fresia Road. A section through there that's real bad.
But the idea is, again, to get us back to a point and maybe, you know, I, we all know that taxes rarely go back. The other direction, but at least to get us where we're getting more bang for our buck, rather than these big projects that are chewing up. Large amounts of money like Walker Mountain's going to. Walker Mountain's gonna chew up a lot of money in a hurry. Um, just because of the nature and what kinda shape it's in, um, and, um. I guess I'll just state, CJ, I, 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 I've said it before, I, I've got great respect for you and, and the fiscal, um, attention you've paid to town. And, um, I know that, uh, you and I did not see eye to eye last Tuesday. But I want you to know that I certainly have respect for you and, and in no way, shape or form was it at all a personal attack.
Ditto for me, Robert.
All right, do you have anything else that you'd like to say?
Um, I, I, I like what I heard about the which roads need it. Uh, Cash had gone over, uh, you know, a couple of different places, um, you know, I wanna come back to there, uh, need to be done on an as needed basis. And not, you know, extra.
Personally, from my pers.
And, and, and it's possible that Walker Mountain Road is gonna need it more often than other roads. You know, and, you know, the, the, the goal of, uh, you know, I, I heard mention of a goal of a mile a year. If you have a mile that needs it, yes, if it's only half a mile, just do half a mile.
Sure.
And if, and if the need, and if two miles are needed, then do two miles. You know, we oughta be able to look forward, look at this road needs it and it's two miles, we're gonna have to put some more in the budget. As needed basis.
Can I make a comment to that CJ? You, I mentioned about the, uh, road up there, Walker Mountain from McCormick's Machine Shop by Schoolhouse Road. Out through there, that's just a touch, three quarters of a mile, you know, and that's where I said, whatever revenue was left over, we'd tie in. Like the, the crick road at the end of Al Fresia Road, you know, and that, that's totally on board of what you're trying to explain there, I believe.
I agree, I agree. I heard a plan, here's the worst roads, here's what we're gonna attack first. Unfortunately, Walker Mountain Road is gonna eat up a lot of money.
Correct, and I think from my perspective, the use of the word extra was probably just a poor choice of words, cuz I, from my perspective on this board, since I've been here. Um, there's never been that attitude of, oh, we've got extra, let's go throw the paving rig over here and, and throw a coat of pavement down. That has not been. Since I've been here, I would say, um, to your credit, Cash, I would say the paving in my perspective has been better planned out. The last few years than maybe it was in the past, but, um, I think that there's never, at least in my perspective, since I've sat here. There's never been an attitude of, oh, we've got extra paving money, let's throw the paving rig over here and throw some down, um, because. We, again, have been playing catch up for so long, we, we've gotta get to that place where it is more.
Maintenance.
Maintenance. It's gotta be the maintenance piece where, um, we're doing those shim and overlays on the roads that are starting to crack to keep them. From falling apart totally, so I think that that's, extra probably was just a poor choice of words in my perspective.
When, another thing, um, and the treasurer's here, she can attest to this. The road budget is the only budget in town that you can carry over. Am I correct?
Highway funds must stay with highway.
Right, so there's.
Did you hear that answer?
The, the answer simply was highway funds must remain with highway, they can't go to another. Use in town.
At the end of the year.
Okay, but they can be carried over?
So what, what has happened in the past and the article has passed now for two years, any excess highway funds. years, any excess highway funds go into the, uh, equipment fund.
That's right, okay.
Which there has not been any excess.
Could you hear that answer, CJ?
There hasn't been an excess?
Correct.
Okay. Um, when, it, it, going back, way back now, we've got the Article Four money and some in the general budget. When you start your road resurfacing, do you use up that Article money first?
Uh, she said yes.
Okay, and that makes sense, because as I understand it, you have to use that money for road resurfacing that year. And I, I, well, as I understand it, Articles, when there's Articles, that, uh, they, they pertain to that fiscal year, and that's it, and whatever the subject of the Article is.
So, I, I have asked that question of the Secretary of State eight ways till Sunday, and all they come back and tell me is that highway money must stay with highway money. So, there was a year, um, I don't know if it was two years ago?
Two years ago.
Where paving did not get done, however, that money was used for paving that following year. So, even though it carried over, because highway money must stay with highway, it cannot go to cover, it, it, it cannot, if there's highway money at the end of the year, in excess, if you will, if there's surplus, it cannot fall into the general fund, so I have to track that separately. So, that's why when you look at the, um, when you look in the, uh, the book, the Town Report, you'll see there's a, there's a line item for where it says general fund, but then it's asterisk, and there's at the bottom, there's that asterisk that gives you the breakdown of through the years, this is what your general fund balance is, and this is what your highway fund balance is, if there was any surplus. But even within that highway fund surplus, there's a, that would've had to been used for paving, which it was. Does that make sense?
It does. I have just one question, which is for curiosity.
Yep.
The year you said no paving was done and the money was carried over, and spent the next year, did the budget include, uh, a normal amount, and so that you had really two years of paving done that year?
Yes, we did. Yes, yes, we did. The, the next, that next year, we, we, we did...
Doubled up?
We doubled up and did more paving.
We, we had, we had a grant for East Clarendon Road.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that was the year your road actually got done, CJ.
That did not get paved. When I got on board, we paved that, and the fa, that next fiscal year, that money that we had, we took that money that wasn't grant and did North Shoesbury Road.
Do you have any other questions, CJ?
Thank you for the explanation on Article Four.
Mm-hmm. All right.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
We're gonna move on then. Uh, approval of select board warrants, they're right over here, so if anybody wants to check them out, go for it. Um, and we did have guests, thank you once again, you guys. Is there any public comments? Okay. Old business. Approve the phone system bid. Thanks, guys.
Mr. Chairman, we've had multiple levels of discussion about this, and I believe all the answers we were looking for have been fulfilled. We know that our fire alarm can now be linked into it, so I would go ahead and make the motion that the chairman signs on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Is there any other discussion?
I will abstain with any comment due to the fact that I know the, uh, gentleman that submitted that bid quite well.
Is there any other discussion?
Other than the fact that it's something that is certainly... Yep, great, that, that's definite, uh, it's been a long time coming.
Aye.
Oh, CJ, CJ's waving, hold on just one second.
When Cash was speaking, the volume went up nicely. Is it possible to do it for you three members on the board, Robert, you're good?
'Cause I was yelling.
Yeah, Cash was yelling, so we just need everybody to speak up, is what it boils down to.
I actually thought that volume went up.
Yeah, yeah, Cash, Cash was yelling from across the room, so...
Okay, there's been a moment made, been seconded, we've had brief discussion, no concern, so all in favor, a motion for the phones, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, looks like this passed, and I'll sign that. Um, under new business, the Waste District Representative, um, we did, we...
Yeah, I, uh, done some looking around, Dave Potter will do it.
Oh.
Yep, and, uh, I kinda explained to him what, more or less what goes on, and I told him that I would do the meeting for the month of March because it would be putting him right in real quick. And so, I'll handle this one, which is a week from Wednesday night, and then, uh, I have some information at home that I will pass along to him, the way the system works and so on.
So, Bob, when we make this switch, are you willing to remain the alternate?
Yes, I'm gonna remain the alternate.
So, I'll make a motion that we officially approve, uh, Dave Potter as the Rutland County Solid Waste District Representative for the Town of Clarendon, effective April first?
April first, if...
April first.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. All right, uh, approval of liquor licenses.
Um, did you see that form in there for you to sign, for the solid waste? It's an appointment form.
I didn't see that.
Yeah.
Oh, right here.
Yeah.
You had it hidden.
So, I'll write Dave Potter's information, but if you could sign that.
Okay.
Or if you could motion to sign that.
Right, please, uh...
Robert motion.
I'll add it to my motion.
Yep.
Okay, is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine to me.
All right, uh, all in favor of the amended motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you.
Um, then we have some liquor licenses.
It's in a, it's in a folder in a folder. Yep. So, this is from Stonehedge, and they have two licenses that need to be signed because they have indoor and outdoor.
Yeah, okay.
That was long ago.
Year ago.
Yeah, every year. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a, is that a whole board, or is that, okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the liquor licenses per Stonehedge?
Second.
And in that motion, we all sign it?
All sign.
Yeah, yeah.
Still.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyways, uh, now, the Mill River, you know, school board discussion, unified school This way, I guess. Here's the folder for that. Um, we had, or we are having, one of the representatives to the school board for the town that sits on the school board is stepping down, to Rob.
He's gonna do it afterwards.
Okay. Is stepping down, uh, from the board on March 12th, I believe that's the date, and, uh, in the past, the town has, uh, always been asked to appoint someone new for the, to fill in till the following, uh, election season in March. So, we had Andrea Hawkins send a, a letter in requesting that if there were an opening, she would like to be considered for that seat. Well, what has transpired since then is we have found out that the school board is responsible for filling that seat. The town may recommend someone, but ultimately, the school board, not the town anymore, will appoint. So, what has happened is, we got in touch with the state, and we had, uh, David Yount send a, uh, an email to us today saying what the steps are, and I personally don't think in any way, shape, or form do I agree with what has transpired here. It should be the biggest town in the union, or whatever they call it, the, should have a right, like any other of the four towns, to appoint from the select board like it always has been done in the past. However, at the end of, I think, last session, all of a sudden, this was put in that in consultation with the select board, the school board has the authority to appoint someone for that open seat until the next election. I don't think that's one of the things that when we were told about this, how great this union, school board union is going to cut taxes and all this other stuff, we've had nothing but taxes being raised.
Every year.
We've had, we've lost now even the authority to put some even temporarily to the following election into the, on the school board. After talking to, uh, a past representative, after talking to a past, uh, board member from Wallingford, I had gotten the impression that this was kind of a thing that was, you know, having served in legislature, I know how, at the end of sessions, what happens. They'll put something in, people don't even read it or consider it, just so that they can end the session. And that's exactly what I think happened here. I personally think that, um, two things, one, after researching this and getting information from the state election folks and all this, that, uh, for me, just one member of the select board, I would recommend to the school board that Andrea Hawkins, who has submitted a letter, what, a month and a half ago, two months ago, something like this, that she be considered. The rule now is, of the law, after the present member turns in as of March 12th, the school board has thirty days to put this out to the newspapers and have people come back and, you know, ask for permission to be appointed. And then, my understanding is, if the select board has any concerns, they can have to wait till then to see who the school board is going to elect. I don't think it's fair for, here again, the biggest community in this whole group, to me, doesn't even have a say. It's the smaller towns out there who are gonna put this person on the school board. I don't think that's fair. And there was, uh, an election, a member from our town who was on the school board for quite a while, he was voted out, and another member beat him by a pretty good margin. I don't necessarily think, just my opinion, and I'll ask the other board members, that that person should be reconsidered to be appointed until next year, because the voters of this town did not approve of that person. However, once again, the Town of Clarendon doesn't have any say in this. The school board, the people from other, outside our community are gonna get the say if that person or any other person gets in, and I don't think it's right. So, if this continues, I think we have the ability to petition the school board, and I'm gonna ask other board members to go along with this, to petition the school board to have another election be, before anyone is appointed. And I also wanna make a statement that I personally, if this goes the way I think some folks are trying to make it go, I am going to ask the voters of this town to get out of this school, union, whatever we, we call it.
You can define this.
Thank you. I don't know why I can't remember that, but I think it's because the hair's standing up. Uh, so, that's my statement. I'll ask the rest of the board members to weigh in.
I would go on record as saying that Clarendon should be, and rightly so, have a person on the board, and, and in fact, each town that's a part of this should have a representative of their town. Um, I don't believe that the, uh, the possibility of, of three other out-of-town people voting in another possibly out-of-town person from who knows where is doing Clarendon any good at all, and I believe the petition needs to be done before the board, uh, school board, um, and especially with the person that did not get elected. Um, he wasn't popular then, he's not popular now, and that's my opinion.
Rob?
Um, so I've had a lot of thoughts about this over the course of the weekend, and when the news came to us, um, our local school district, um, there's no easy way of saying it, has had a, a year of ups and downs. Um, and in many cases, has had a very controversial year in the eyes of many voters. I personally, as one member, and reading the statute that stated that the board can fill a vacancy until an election, which is held either annual, at our annual, which is our March, what we just had, or special meeting, I also will go on record that I firmly believe that with the year that has just been experienced, this decision should lay one hundred percent in the hands of the voters.
Amen.
And I personally, tonight, am on record as believing that a special election is in order, and a special election needs to be called. I know we can't do that tonight because technically there's not a vacancy tonight, but I will go on record stating there needs to be a special election, because the voters of the Town of Clarendon deserve the say of what happens to their seat on the school board. There is no reason for four members from Wallingford, it's two or three from Shrewsbury, and one from Tinmouth, should get to say who the Clarendon representative is going to be. The Town of Clarendon... The town of Clarendon voters hold that right. They hold the right to say who their representative will be.
Agreed.
Especially in the climate and the year that we have had politically with our district.
Thank you, Rob. Yes?
I'll echo what Robert just mentioned about it, and I totally agree that the Clarendon residents need their personal voice on this. And with the election that did happen and seeing the results of that, I am totally open for giving a new person, somebody different, a chance to, to take on that position. What I see is the results of the elections and stuff. Um, we haven't, apparently, the voters did not get what they had representing them in the past. I'm gonna leave it at that.
Rob?
And I'm about the same thing. I agree with Robert one hundred percent. I do not particularly care for special elections. But I care less about people from another town telling us what we're gonna do in our town. So that's the situation that's gonna be handled by our taxpayers and our voters and do it as a special election. The, the last year has been kinda tumultuous, we'll say, at the school, and we'll leave it at that, but, no, do it with the special election.
I think that, um, it's fairly clear after doing all this research, the town clerk, our selectman's admin clerk, uh, phone calls from the state, um, that it, it appears as though, and I'm not a hundred percent sure on that, even though I did ask the question, if, um, the town, when the school board, after the 12th, sends out to the newspaper, it will say, is there any person who live in Clarendon want to run for the school board? That's how it reads. And here again, I'll say that we did have, thinking that we had the authority to appoint someone until the following election to fill in the term. It appears now that we don't have the say in that. The school board will have the say in that. Right now, we have a letter from a citizen in town who has a child that goes to their school, who graduated from their school, must be responsible back to the community to serve on that board. And I don't, for the life of me, like the procedures now that we have to follow. Have to follow. We have to follow this. So I agree that if this goes on, then two things. One, to Robbie's point about having a special, we will petition the school board. We will petition for a special election. And me personally, I want to investigate as to how we will get out of this.
Mr. Chairman, it's not that complicated.
I hope not.
I don't, I, the way the statute reads, we call a special election. That's it.
For disappointment.
That's, that's right.
What I'm talking about.
The, the decision on any special election that takes place in this town falls to these five people sitting right here.
Exactly.
We are the ones who have the rights to warn and call a special election.
We will petition. It came to me from the state after I was headed home. The guy called me and he's emailing Gloria back. We have to, if we don't agree with what's going on, we have to then petition the school board. We have to have a qualified amount of people in this petition to the school board. That's, yeah, that's how.
I, I would argue then that the state is gonna have a lawsuit on their hands because we hold the power, sitting behind these tables right here, to call a special election.
Exactly.
And the statute states very clearly in it that the person will serve until a regular or a special election. We are the ones that call a special election. We, we are the ones who authorize a warning. We're the ones who authorize the special meeting, which is gonna include the election.
Let me say this, Rob, and make it clear. Starting tomorrow, we're going to investigate, we'll even call Bill Blumer, who represents the town in many cases, to get the official tract that we have to take in case we, the town doesn't agree on who they put into that position. Lowest temporary till another election. That's number one. But I still want to push for this town to get out of this group of towns, whatever it is, because this, it, it does us no good. Taxes have been raised and raised and raised. There's all kinds of stuff going on down at school. And quite frankly, I can see why they don't have the population because people are just sending kids to other schools.
I believe we've got some participants that want to participate from Zoom. And I believe Andrea, I saw you first, and then CJ, I saw your camera came back on, so we'll go to you second because I'm assuming you probably wanna say something as well. So Andrea was first. So you'll need to unmute yourself.
So, you will not have my camera because I'm sitting in my car on a robotics meeting. But I just have to say that I was ready to run in the election, um, that we just had. But I did not want to run against Matt Notchberg because I felt that he was, I didn't want to make it too complicated if I really wanted to see Matt get in. And I also, so that's why my letter came in saying if there was a resignation and because I heard through the grapevine that there may be, because I didn't wanna cause any waste for Matt. And I do want to be considered for the position because I am a graduate from Mill River and Clarendon Elementary. My son attends.
Lost ya.
Um, yeah, her phone must have given out. Are you still there, Andrea?
Oh, I, you got me again. I'm here.
Yep.
I got booted out.
The last thing we heard was that, uh, your son attends Clarendon Elementary.
So, my son is at Mill River right now. I graduated from Mill River. I intend to keep my son at Mill River. And I think a lot of parents who have not our older children from the school are feeling the same way if things keep up down there. I have a concern about Gloria forwarded me the new legislature. And my concern is how it actually, and got, as Mr. Clopson said, kinda maybe bumped through so the end of legislature wouldn't end. I'm not sure. Can somebody answer how that would have gotten it put in there?
Um, the end, up there, it's kind of a free-for-all at the end, and when they're getting close to the end of the session, there are amendments that get tacked on to the end of bills. Um, and it's believed that the latest time, the latest time that this happened, um, which it was scheduled to sunset, and my understanding is the latest time, they, they tacked it on again so that it continued. So, um, this, this whole process has only been in existence on the whole, I think, based on our.
Only since September.
Well, for about four, four or five years, we just haven't been aware of it because we've never run into this situation. But it is a relatively new, it's a relatively new piece of legislation.
Okay.
In other words, it's not, it's not like it's a piece of legislation that's like thirty years old. This is, this is relatively new legislation since many of the mergers began.
Yeah, and I, I kinda assumed that it got put in when we merged. So I just wanna, I just wanna, and I know it was a little discerning to hear that this was put in there. And, but, on the other hand, I wanna just say that I'm gonna stick it out and if all else fails, if I have to next March, run for the rest, you know, for when that term is up and try to be in because I believe that our children deserve way more than what they're actually receiving there. And it's not only the fact that I graduated from there. I coached under the, um, I coached cheerleading for four years under the principle of, um, well, under Mr. Finn, when he was principal. Tyler was assistant principal. I got to see a lot of stuff unfold, even with Dave Young being higher up, but he was around and you heard what was happening as the coach and all this other stuff. So I just want to make it apparent that I will stick it out. I am very determined to somehow get on the board if I have to keep running every time Clarendon has an opening. Because I feel that our kids are not getting what they deserve. And I also feel that our, as a taxpayer, we're paying too much for what has actually been happening in this pandemic state for the last year. I think our children have suffered enormously because of decisions that have been made and how things have been handled. And I just, I, I just wanted to say that, no matter, I know this runs a little glitch and everything, but no matter what happens, I'm willing to stay in this and stick it out and hopefully be serving on the school board to make things better and help to make our school better and people a little left frustrated with what's been happening.
Andrea, one of the things that I'm going to ask is, given the fact that our, the information we have now is that after the 12th, the school board, the district, whatever you wanna call it, are the ones that are going to put something in the newspapers. So you may have to, uh, request to the school board. We'll try and pass what you have sent us to the school board because we're consulting or insulting as far as I'm concerned, but anyway. Right, um, and I think that, so let's pay attention to that when that all occurs.
Yes, because technically, as I understand, there is not a vacancy until the thirteenth of this month.
Correct.
Right.
That is correct.
And then it's, they have thirty days
Right.
to put somebody in for the rest of the term?
That's right.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I mean, I'll be watching and, you know, hopefully get a chance to be in there and somewhat try to make a difference.
Well, I appreciate that. You know, I've known you for a long time, ever since high school with my older kids. And I know that you, um, stand by what you're telling us.
Yes, definitely. I mean, I've been, been in the school system, you know, even after I graduated, doing coaching cheerleading and, you know, having my son there. And I, he was at Clarendon and, you know, where I went to school and everything else. So I'm, yeah, there, I wanna see a change.
Well, thank you for, uh, again, your interest that you conveyed to us, and thank you for your comments. And I think we're gonna move on now. CJ, did you have some comments you wanted to make? You are muted, so you'll need to unmute there.
Uh, yes, this is only my second Zoom meeting, and I don't know all the intricacies. And I had seen for quite a while a hand up in Andrea's box, but I never heard her speak. So I didn't know whether you knew she wanted to speak or not, and whether that was even a signal that she wanted to speak. That, that was my only thing to get on and tell you somebody else wanted to speak for a long time.
Yes, yeah, I was just letting, uh, Mike wanted to run through the board members with their comments first, and then, uh, I, I was waiting for that process to get done to transition to her, so.
Okay.
Thank you for the heads up, though.
You bet.
Thank you, CJ.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else? All right. I think, uh.
Ian Mullins.
Mike, um, were you gonna read the email? Diane Ingles wanted you to read in the letter.
Okay, for the record. Thanks for reminding me. Diane Ingles sent a, uh, email to the board. And in this email, first I'll read what she, she is saying to the select board members. As you may know, on March third, twenty twenty-one, at the Mill River School District Board Meeting, George Ambrose announced that he will resign as a Mill River School District Board Member effective this month. Uh, and we now know it's on the twelfth of this month. You now have the task to find a replacement. John McKenna might be considered by some as a potential fill-in. The fact that he lost his position as a board member on March second, twenty twenty-one by a considerable margin shows that the community does not want him. Attaches an email that I received from Mr. McKenna that clearly shows how he feels about our community. I respectfully ask that when you consider options to fill Mr. Ambrose's position, that Mr. McKenna not be among those options. And I have talked with John, he called my house, and I did say to, uh, John that I'm going to bring this up at our select board meeting tonight. This is from Diane Ingles. She wrote to John, if you would only have listened to your constituents, things may be different. The board did not want to hear anything that was different. You spend the whole summer fighting with your community. At some point, the board needs the community. And hmm, John answered that. I listened. It was hard not to, with several people all saying the same racist and homophobic things over and over. The problem wasn't with my hearing. It was that I disagreed with you and with every fiber of my being. The fact that two-thirds of the town agree with the racist means, I have a lot of work to do in, uh, in other word, in other areas. Now that I don't have to worry about getting re-elected, I can say that as much as I want. Feel free to share. And I wanna emphasize the word that he said, feel free to share, that we could bring this up. Uh, and thanks for being so mature about this that you had to rub it in. Says a lot about you. And I don't know that I have anything else to follow up on that. Other than, this is the language that we got from David Yount, who's the supervisor there. And he, and I'll read this briefly, just so it's on the record. George Ambrose has submitted his resignation from the seat on the Mill River Unified School District Board representing Clarendon. The resignation is effective and the seat becomes vacant on Friday, March 12th. Pertinent statutory language for unified school districts initially in Act eleven of twenty eighteen, sunsetting June thirtieth, twenty twenty, and reinstated by the General Assembly in last summer's late session. This is what it states. Notwithstanding any provision of law to the contrary, if a vacancy occurs on the board of a unified union school district and the vacancy is in a seat that is allocated to be a specific town, the clerk of the uni, the clerk of the unified union school district shall immediately notify the select board of the town. Within thirty days after the receipt of that notice, the Unified Union School District Board, in consultation with the select board, shall appoint a person who is otherwise eligible to serve as a member of the Unified Union School District Board to fill the vacancy until an election is held at an annual or special meeting, unless otherwise provided in accordance with the Unified Union School District's Articles of Agreement. unless otherwise provided in accordance with the Unified Union School District's Articles of Agreement. The next step, this is what David Jones told us in this email. I will work with the newly elected district clerk, Crystal Ossoff, to ensure that on the date of the vacancy, March twelfth, an official letter is sent to the Clarendon Select Board announcing that the vacancy is effective that day. The district, the next step, the district will publicize the vacancy in the Rutland Herald and Clarendon Front Port Forum, asking interested individuals to submit letters of interest to the board via the superintendent, no later than Friday, April second. The letter to the select board will ask the select board to issue a letter to the Mill River Board Chair via the superintendent, no later than Friday, April second, indicating any feedback or thoughts that the select board would like to provide to the district uh, as an official consultation, communication to the, here again, the board. The Mill River Unified Union District Board will plan to take action and appoint a replacement board member at its first meeting in April, on Wednesday, April seventh. The appoint, that appointment, appointed board member will serve the remainder of George Ambrose's term, which runs through Town Meeting Day, twenty twenty-two. That individual will be eligible to run for that seat again if they choose for a new standard three-year term on Town Meeting Day. And that's what we received from David Jones at this time. Does any board member wanna make any comments?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I totally agree with doing what we're doing right now, but also I think we should very strongly approach our representatives in Montpelier.
Absolutely.
To get this changed back so as that these decisions are made by the people of the community and not by the school board.
Full disclosure, I want you to know that I have had a conversation with Art Peterson, who's our new representative. And he is going to have discussions, do some investigating and he'll talk with the other representative as well as Brian Collmore.
Good.
That's what he said, so.
Good.
We'll wait to hear back from them. They're up there. They know, you know, what's kinda going on.
And just, just one other, and I, I'm not sure about this and I'm gonna ask the question. Do we need to have, as soon as we get that letter down from Mill River, a special meeting so as to get this thing moving so they don't say, well, you weren't uh, in time?
All right, uh, uh...
I, I don't know.
We can, we can, any one of us can request a special meeting and according to the open meeting law, and then we could uh, notice it or we could have the special meeting and then also notice the public as to the discussion of a special meeting, unless it's in executive session.
Yeah, I know, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be in executive session, just uh, I guess what my thought is, maybe I'm not making myself clear. I don't want it to slip by and be too long.
Right.
Because they say, okay, April seventh, they're gonna do it. We wanna make sure...
I, I think the reality is, Bob, that we have one more meeting coming up in March.
Right.
I think that a lot of homework needs to be done um, as we gear up for that. Um, I think the stance of the five people on this board that I've heard tonight is local control needs to remain local. And no matter which side of the aisle you fall on, I think there's a belief in local control. And this board, I think, has made it very clear tonight that they are going to defend the local control, which is decided by the taxpayers of the town of Clarendon.
I agree a hundred percent.
And that taxpayers of Wallingford, taxpayers of Shrewsbury, taxpayers of Tinmouth are not gonna decide who our representative is to this board. We are going to defend that that seat rightfully gets decided by the taxpayers of the town of Clarendon.
Absolutely.
And that's where I think we stand. And I would, I would hope, again, no matter which side of the aisle a person listening to this meeting or, or wondering where we're coming from, I think both sides of the aisle should be able to agree on that.
I would think so.
And I, and I believe that uh, each of the other towns would have the same um, opportunity as we would. If they were in the same situation.
If, if another town was in the same situation...
I wouldn't interfere with their situation.
Absolutely.
I would not interfere with their, their town affairs.
If Wallingford had a vacancy, I would not want a representative from Clarendon deciding who their person is going to be. That rightfully resides with the residents of that town and that's what we are defending.
The, I think what the counter discussion might be is they're only asking for someone from Clarendon to put in a letter requesting to fill that void.
Mm-hmm.
In the past, it has always been the board is selecting because uh, the
And rightly so.
gave us that jurisdiction.
That's right. Exactly right.
State guidelines gave us that position
That's right.
to appoint.
Absolutely.
And this clearly, in my opinion, takes us out of that. And that's why, once again, the last time I'll say it tonight, is regardless of how this goes, I will be uh, a member of this board that wants to get out of this district. It's, to me, it's not what was promised, so.
Mm-hmm.
That's my opinion. I'm a tough little grown boy.
Yeah.
Former U.S. Marine.
And I believe this amendment was made from somebody north of Montpelier, if I recall.
Mr. Chairman, I think in the interest of time, let's uh,
End it.
I think we've uh, gone round on this enough.
All right.
I think our opinion has been clearly stated.
I agree.
Town Treasurer, do you have anything you...
I have nothing, Mr. Chief.
Okay. Uh, Katie, do you have anything?
I have none.
All right, then, at this time, I entertain a motion.
I so move.
Well, wait a minute.
Unless anybody needs, uh, has another...
Robbie, did you have any comments in closing?
I do not. I think I've said enough tonight.
Yeah, I said enough.
I've said enough.
We're good. Now I make that uh, that motion to adjourn.
All right, you're ready for the discussion. You don't wanna stay around for another half hour or so?
We're good.
All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Done.